We are now moving on to item C under Old Business, New Brisbane Library Fundraising Strategy.
All right. Now Terry, you needed to make a motion. So how long can you stay?
Well, we've got a successor meeting after this also.
Do we have to do it correct? Okay. So what, 11:15 or?
The remainder of this meeting.
11:20.
For this meeting?
The other one should take just a few minutes. So say 11:20.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item C, New Brisbane Library Fundraising Strategy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight to discuss a new aspect of the fundraising strategy for the new Brisbane Library. As you recall from the December 8th meeting where the fundraising strategy was initially introduced, the first aspect of naming rights was what caused some concern and direction was given at that meeting for staff to look more closely at formulating a draft naming rights or donation policy. And in the meantime, we have had a meeting with the fundraising committee, which is made up of staff from the Seminole County Libraries as well as the Friends of the Brisbane Library, which is the face of the fundraising effort and staff. And I also took a field trip to some libraries that in the past, well, I guess, 12 and 10 years have had library fundraising projects. And the first one being the Friends of the Millbrae Library had a goal of $250,000 that was met through individual and business donations along with a trust or bequeathed fund of $100,000. And so this is just examples I wanted to see of various, how they did their donor recognition. And I've been speaking with Anne-Marie Despain from the Library Services, Library Services Director. And she provided information in the staff report and the attachment for, so, or three rather, that you can go through. But essentially, it's here on the screen what has been done in other libraries. The second one being the Friends of the Belmont Library, their fundraising goal was $225,000. The Millbrae Library had their opening, or they started their fundraising in 2004 and Belmont's in 2006. Belmont, sorry, I should mention that with the Millbrae Library, they didn't have a formal naming policy, though they do have a room or an area in the library that was named after an individual who bequeathed a large amount of money to the Friends of the Millbrae Library prior to her passing. And so that was the $100,000 that was used to fill that gap for their fundraising. They have that main donor wall in the entryway of the library that, as you can see, can be added to. And as donations come in, they have signage to indicate how to have your family's inscription or organization or association inscribed. And in their kids' room or children's area, they have the ceramic books binds that they send out to a company that $150, their children and grandchildren's name are added and they have signage indicating how that can be done. And that middle picture is the periodical room that is named. At Belmont Library, they have a donor wall as you walk in and they have listed on there the various tiers similar to Millbrae of the donor levels. And they also have naming, named rooms. There's three. There's the Oracle Technology Center, the Toby Room, which is the community room, and the Belmont Rotary Club Teen Center. So they were able to exceed their goal through individual business committee organizations. And in addition to that, were able to receive $400,000 in funds from Oracle, Toby, and the Belmont Rotary. So the fundraising committee on December 14th, after the December 8th last council meeting, met to start discussing a draft donation policy. And it's essentially two parts, but three-pronged, I guess you can say, where the first part talks about developers, landowners, or consultants representing a developer or landowner. And the three prongs being whether they are currently applying for a land use permit that they would not be asked or asked for donation, nor would their donation be accepted. If they had applied and been approved for a land use permit more than three years ago from the adoption of the policy, so if it were tonight, then January 5th of 2014, then they would have the possibility to have a room or area named after them. If it was less than three years ago, then between January 2014 and today, then they would have the possibility of being recognized on a donor wall, but not have naming rights. The second part involves businesses or individuals with contracts with the city. And so staff and the fundraising committee felt that if the contract exceeded $250,000, then they would not be solicited for donation, nor would their donation be accepted. And this would include franchises within three years of renewal date. If the contract was below $100,000, then they would have the possibility to have a room named after them. And if it was between the amounts of $100 and $250,000, then they would have the possibility of being recognized on the donor wall only.
So that would be like if we, would that count for like, say, we wanted to give a large sum of money? Since we're technically employed by the city, would that impact us? Because it says individuals.
As long as you're not making more than $100,000 from us.
Okay.
Nope.
So then, I'm sorry, this is very hard to read, but the flow chart basically pictorially illustrates what I just went over, where it has the developer, landowner, and consultant. Diagrams are basically very similar, just the words in the diamonds or the different decision points change slightly. But whether the developer was approved for a land use permit more than three years ago, if you answer yes, then they have the possibility to have a room area named. No, then you continue down the decision matrix. The one that is different would be the business and individual one, where it has the added decision diamond at the bottom, which if they have a franchise within three years of renewal. So this was, again, just the draft donation policy, given the concern that was raised at the last council meeting. And the hope for tonight is that we can have some answered questions so that the fundraising committee can meet again to talk about the logistics of going forward. But there have been conversations that I've had with members of the Friends of the Brisbane Library on the board and also with Anne-Marie and stuff. They're there in the back to answer any questions. But I'll just go over the questions that I've been hearing from, speaking with these individuals about the draft policy before you. And the thing that comes up is, is it too restrictive as currently written? Do naming rights need to be determined at the onset of the fundraising? Or can the Friends bring counsel any potentially negatively perceived donations or requests for consideration or approval at some time in the future before they're accepted? If naming rights are not a desired piece of the fundraising strategy, will the Friends still be allowed to accept donations from all companies? And lastly, is the fundraising goal amount of $300,000 set for the Friends of the Brisbane Library realistic? So those are the questions that we are just hoping to hear more from the council from tonight. And of course, if you have any questions at this point, we'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Caroline. Well, if you could leave the questions to consider, because looking over this, I mean, it looks like you put a lot of work into it. And I'm thinking, wow, this is complicated. This is like something the city council would do, is complicated, you know? And I'm sorry if that was the direction that we gave, because I think we were kind of looking more at naming rights of rooms and stuff like that. Personally, for me, as one council member, I'd rather have a donor wall. And, you know, however you want to determine it, like platinum, gold, silver, you know, remember, whatever. And anybody that's willing to donate, I don't care if they do business in here, I don't want to restrict it. You know, if you want to donate to platinum, please do. But you're not getting a room named after you. So we'll just put you on the wall and that's that and kind of make it a little more simplified, because this is, you know, pretty complicated to follow, you know, for me.
We just wanted to throw everything, make it very, I guess, if there was that perception of the city receiving, or the Friends receiving any donations from companies, and whether that would have any impact on council business, so.
Just the honor of school of politics, man. Eat your food, drink your booze, sleep with your women, and still vote against you, you know? It's like, yeah, so I don't want to restrict it, you know? I just don't want to give them naming rights.
That's an after 11 o'clock statement right there.
Right. Do you miss out on like big time money when you don't have rooms? Like, I went to a high school where our water fountains were named after people. Our bathrooms were named after people. So.
Yeah, you went to a Catholic school and that's what they do.
Yeah, they just, they sell it all. So, um, so, but I feel like that's how you get big mon- that's like where the big money comes from. Are you going to get $300,000 selling $150 plaques in the children's room? Like, I don't, then I think you need to amend the goal, because I don't foresee, I don't foresee if all they're getting is, I was part of the Platinum Club. What does that mean if we're all on the same wall? So I don't think then, and I'm not saying that naming is the way to go. That makes me nervous also. But, you know, maybe there is some happy medium where the water tank outside that we've been talking about that collects the rain, maybe that's named. Maybe a bench is named. Maybe we don't name rooms, but maybe there are other things that we can find to name. I'm just trying to find a way that you can still solicit big money donations if you're not gonna... Because people, they, they, they give, but they also give to get sometimes. And if you're asking for $100,000 from one person, a name on a wall might not be enough to solicit that large of a donation. So I think we need to be realistic about the goal if there's not going to be a whole lot in it for them other than a small name on a plaque with everybody else.
People look to donate, though. I don't buy that argument, you know? I mean, I hear what you're saying and I look at, you go down to Mills Hospital or some of the other hospitals, you know, they have walls like that, you know? Libraries and, and there's a lot of philanthropists out there that think these are good things and they don't have an overly exploded ego that they need a bathroom or a fountain named after them, you know? You know, and I think for us, that, you know, I'm not comfortable with people naming rooms after it, because you put a lot of money in there. And I think that was the direction that we set. And then it came up with a complicated map that, oh, if you make $100,000 or you do, you know? I want to see Recology donate money to, to a wall, you know? I mean, they would. I want to see UPC donate money. I want to see them be part of the community on doing it. If they don't, they don't. They have a choice. But we make it, you know, more direct and.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't name rooms. I'm just saying that that's usually when, that's when you see high, high-priced donations. So we might need to get a little bit more creative if we're not going to go with a room, something else. And I think, I'm on board with you 100%. I just, I'm trying to be realistic. If you take away that kind of flashy naming rights, you want to still make sure you can hit your goal too. So I could be wrong. I'm just trying to think of everything.
We have a lot of businesses in Brisbane that, you know, that do these things. I mean, people bought bricks in the park. I mean, they're not, not, you know, not, not on a level that maybe we're asking, but, you know, I don't know.
That was something, yeah, that the board was talking about, whether they could have the flexibility to have those conversations with the business, because you don't necessarily know what is the amount that they're looking to give or what maybe that would differ based on what is being offered. And so that was why the number two, could it be that the Friends have the ability to have those, start those conversations with the business? If there is the potential that the business would like a name, maybe like, tonight it's only outdoors or on benches or not in areas within the library.
Someone's giving a million dollars. I might entertain it.
And then over the course, in the fundraising strategy, it talks about over the course of a number of years. And that's something that's never been done with the park or skate park, so that there could be the potential for more higher donations to be made if it were spread out.
Yeah, I just think, you know, the history of our culture in Brisbane has been very independent and that, you know, people are always wary of buying, you know? I remember that from the garbage wars in the 60s. Scavengers brought in an airplane and made a strip on a dump. It was giving free airplane rides to citizens to basically buy their vote. And it was ludicrous, but it, but a lot of people fell for it in a sense, you know? It's like throwing that kind of stuff around. I think we ought to make kind of very straightforward so that people know and then allow the committee to go out and see what, what they can get. Then we can adjust if, if we needed to.
Sure.
So, so overall, the project for the library is approximately how much money? To build and design and everything?
I think, I think the financing plan that we brought to back in April, or I don't remember when, was about 8.8 million is what we were looking to try and finance. Obviously, we won't know the real cost of it until we go out to bid.
Okay, so we're looking at a $9 million project. The money that the Friends are trying to raise is for little extras?
So the overall project includes money for, from the Northeast Ridge, the new, the new construction, what was left over from the old construction, borrowing money as much as we think that the county is able to loan us, as well as borrowing money from the city's general fund to the extent that the business license tax can afford for the next 20 years. When all that is said and done, there is about $300,000 left over that we, you know, that we don't have through the business license tax. So that's the way that the idea of how much we would probably, we would need to raise in donations came about. There's also Measure A money from the county as well. I should not forget that. And then the JPA provides 400,000, about 400,000 for the fixtures, furniture, and equipment. And all that added together comes up to about 8.8, as you said, about $9 million.
It just seems that, you know, all those things coming together and going into debt for 20 years for a fabulous library, it seems that that's where the focus should be and on the community. And if the city needs to borrow 300,000 more from itself to cover the little things, which the 300,000 is in the big picture, what, 3%? The total funds are 2%? I think a donor wall, I think, I don't, I don't have a problem with people donating money for a donor wall. I just had concerns about, you know, the Sunset Scavengers Library, or the Sunset Scavengers Room, or those kind of things. I think people should donate, and I think our community will donate for the good of the library and for the community spirit of it, and that we shouldn't monetize that trivial amount to the extent of naming a wing after them. You know, like if somebody who donates $1 billion to a hospital and gets a wing named for them, you know? And it's not that when you go check into Seton, you think, oh, I'm checking into the Terry O'Connell wing. I mean, you say you're going to Seton. And I just would hate to see that be perpetuated at our library that, oh, I'm going to the Sunset Scavengers Room. Oh, you're going to the Teen Library, or whatever section you're going to, the History Room. So that was my concern when I brought it up, not the whole formula of who gets a wall and who gets a room and whether it's a bench or a water fountain. So.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I know we've got a couple of Friends members and I'd really like to tap into their, you know, understanding of what, you know, how they came up with this formula and, you know, to me, I like fundraising because it provides ownership, you know, from the community. So Kevin, Michael?
Hello, Michael Schuman, longtime treasurer of the Friends of the Library. And I stuck with it just for this occasion of seeing the new library, so I'm really excited. I'm also been a member of the Stakeholders Committee. Yeah, with the fundraising, I mean, I don't actually like asking people for money, but I'm, think that, when I think about the Friends role in the new library, that it is about fundraising and like Cliff, you said that, you know, it's a chance to go to the community and it forces you to explain what you're doing and get their support. And so, you know, my kids don't use the playground in the, in the park, but when I drive by there and see the wall or I'm in the park and I know that somewhere in there, I don't know if I've ever found it, but I have a star. And so I feel differently about the playground that, so, you know, I think it's important that we do some fundraising in the community. And, you know, if businesses want to donate, that's also great. I'm with you, Clark. You know, when the quarry people were asking to build housing in the quarry, I didn't like that idea, but I was thrilled when they gave money to, you know, events in the city and they're buying goodwill. I don't, I don't think, I don't perceive corporations giving money as trying to buy off the council. You know, I think when it comes to negotiating with a developer, with UPC, you know, getting the high school and the this and the that, you know, that's where it's exchanging things. But, you know, giving to the library or to Live Admission Blues is about goodwill. And so, so I'm fine with that. I am not comfortable with having rooms named after businesses. I totally agree with you, Terry. I mean, the only example in the libraries with named rooms that was presented by Caroline was the, in Belmont, two, one owns a family, another's a family foundation. And so, and then Oracle, they gave, I think, at least $300,000 and then also partnered with education, you know? So, you know, if a business comes and says, hey, you know, we want to write a really big check, then at that point, you know, and if, and they say, we'd really like to have this, you know? At that point, we should have a discussion and say, is this something we're comfortable with? So what you were saying, Madison, as far as people wanting recognition for giving money? There was just an article about the James Bond of philanthropy, because no one knows about him. He just gave away the last of his $8 billion. And he will, he gave money to build, I think, 1,000 buildings in part under the condition that his name doesn't go on it. And, you know, so different people want different things, you know? Different businesses want different things. So we shouldn't, you know, assume that the only way to get the money is to sell the name. And, and I, the $300,000, you know, it's not something that I think that the Friends can easily or even succeed at raising, and I think that that's too high a bar. And so, you know, what exactly, you know, is realistic? Whether it's $100,000 or $150,000, I don't know. But I agree with you, Terry, that we should look someplace else for the money that, I mean, I guess we don't have an exact accounting anyway of what it's going to cost. But I think it's important to set a realistic bar or a realistic level that we try to raise to. And, you know, maybe we'll get lucky and someone with a lot of money will come forward. And, you know, people have given hundreds of thousands of dollars to the Lions Club and, you know, that certainly wasn't expected. So you never know. Maybe there's someone who's wealthy that loves libraries that's going to write a big check.
You know, Michael, you mentioned Belmont.
Yeah.
So, yeah, in those pictures that Caroline showed, so the, the recognition signs were very small. So, I mean, is that like?
Well, they're, actually, there's on the wall for the, looking at her pictures closely, it seemed like, you know, it had, the name of the wall was the Oracle Technology Center or whatever. I'm not sure what it is, but Caroline told me that the staff, they don't, people don't call it the Oracle. They use the initials OTC. They don't want to.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah. But I mean, but the, you know, as far as, you know, recognizing Oracle.
Yeah.
Just based on the, on the picture, it seemed like it was just a very small sign. So it wasn't like, you know, you're going to have this big plastered, you know, Oracle recognition. It was just like, okay, yeah, we appreciate you, you know, that you gave this money. And so we're going to, you know, acknowledge that, but we're going to do it in a tasteful way. Is that something that you guys had discussed about? Like, if you were going to name a room, that it would be more, a more tasteful approach rather than something that was very loud?
Yeah, certainly if, if we do have a donation that we feel, you know, and even better, a donation in a partnership in some way, you know, that we feel that warrants naming a room, then yeah, that certainly would make it easier to, you know, have it small and.
So what you're asking for is, is to have the flexibility? So I mean, because you have said, yes, no, I'm not really in favor of that, but however, if we get the right amount of money, we'd like to have the opportunity to entertain that.
That's how I feel too.
Yeah, you know, and who knows what, you know? Maybe there'll be something that we didn't think of that a donor wants, is interested in. And so, you know, we should, we should be open to that.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's there.
All right. No, I'm good with that.
Kevin, would you like to add anything? Thank you, Michael.
Just to let the council know it is 11:20, so.
Okay, as brief as possible.
Okay.
Or do we need to make a motion to extend further? Pardon? We had extended till 11:20. So Terry, you had?
So move to 11:30?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. My name is Kevin Fryer and I am also associated with Friends of the Brisbane Library. And I first wanted to, to, to thank Caroline for putting this mishmash together. I know she was being polled in many different directions and trying to include everybody's concerns. I'm also really pleased to hear that some of the reaction to it is, is that it's very problematic, because I believe that is true also. Friends of Brisbane Library is called the face of this fundraising project. It's important to establish to whom are the checks being written and who is making the ask? And I brought that up in a, in a fundraising meeting and got a very vague answer. Since then, I have clarified that with, with Caroline, and indeed, it is Friends of the Brisbane Library. So it's very important for everybody to understand that you are making a policy and, and, and forming the conversation that you are then going to hand off to a small nonprofit volunteer organization and ask us to implement. I just want to make sure we're on that foundation, because everything that I say then follows from that. The $300,000 is crushing for us to consider to raise. And if you look at, at how it, it came about, it came about as the money left over and, and that's, that's the number and that's filtered down until now. In the, this staff report, it says that's the amount that Friends has identified that should be raised. Well, that's not true. And if you look at the Belmont Library, how much money was raised? The size of that community, the size of that, of that library, same with Millbrae and also with the third one. I'm sorry?
Portola Valley.
Portola Valley. And you, you, you have a look at that, and then look at what we're being asked to raise. It's more than any of those, in a much smaller town. So that number really has to be changed. That's, that's, that's really unfair to us. I want to talk about the naming rights thing, because I think that is really, 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 really a bad idea. The, the, the example of the Oracle Room is, must have been a result, and, and, and we got the press release from it, so we could read about how it was presented. That had to be the result of a conversation from two people high up said, hey, what do you want to do? Uh, we think this is a good idea. How would you like, well, this is in our interest. We're Oracle, we'd like to do a tech, that's great, we'll support your programs. That's good fundraising. Selling off every little nook and cranny of the Brisbane Library is bad. It's bad for the community, it's bad fundraising. Uh, is that, is that the conversation that you are going to ask us as the face of asking for money to have? Are we, we have two, two, uh, uh, waste management companies. Are we, are we supposed to go to say to one, yes, you can buy a room, and to the other, no, you can't? You can, you can both give us money, but one can be named and one can't. That's, that's, uh, that's a terrible. I mean, I don't know how to have that kind of conversation. I'm with you, Clark. You take all money. If this is Friends of the Brisbane Library, if we are doing the ask, if we are not giving, if we're not selling off bits of the library, and if we are taking the checks, then there is no conflict of interest, there is no pay to play. It's not about, uh, some company trying to buy favor with the city. That's, that's the way it should be. Uh, in looking through this, you know, through this whole process of putting this together, I, I went back and listened to the, uh, the April seventh meeting, uh, in part to find out where this three thousand dollar, three hundred thousand dollar number came along. And the architects were here at that point, and the architects volunteered to help with fundraising. And we've neglected to tap that resource. We need more people with fundraising experience to be in the mix to try to figure out how to raise whatever amount of money is, is appropriate. They have helped lots of other libraries in doing this. So certainly, they could come to the table and say, hey, what we did here was this, and this worked, and that didn't. And, and then we can filter that in terms of our own community and say, okay, here's what we want to take from that, and, and what, uh, what we're not. There's one other thing I, I have on my notes, and that's the example of five years to pay. Now, that would have to go through Friends of the Brisbane Library. So Friends of the Brisbane Library is now on the hook five years to, to reach back out to large donors. Uh, and, and, and I also wanted to mention, what is the impact of this going to have on, on the other, uh, uh, nonprofit organizations that raise money from individuals and from businesses uh, year over year? What's, what's that going to do to the, to the small nonprofit fundraising ecosystem if we try to push a, a three hundred thousand dollar, uh, fundraising thing through, principally through the business community? Um, you know, raising money from a library should be really an easy conversation to have. Libraries are, are things that people are going to want to give money to. And however much money we raise, or however little money we raise, part of the importance of doing it is not about, is it not about the dollar amount that you end up with at the end? It's about community participation. It's about the small guy who, who gives a hundred dollars, and it's about the business that gives us ten thousand dollars. And in truth, the, 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 the guy who gives us a hundred dollars, it's probably more to, out of his budget, more of a sacrifice out of his budget, more of a commitment than it is the business that gives us, that gives us ten thousand dollars. So the importance of it really is, is about, is about community participation, community buying into this whole idea, community excitement for the idea of, of a new library in Brisbane, which is the cornerstone of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I had a question for staff about the chart, and what I'm hearing is most people are not, most council members are not in favor of the, the donor rooms. Um, but I had a question about the, what is the difference between the amount that can be given for a donor wall versus a room? Is there any maximum for a donor wall donation under this chart scenario?
Um, in the, in original fundraising strategy from December eighth, um, it was thought that everyone who donated would be on the donor wall. It's just that the rooms would be at a much higher, um, donor level between like twenty to fifty thousand dollars. And of course, if they were to give that amount, that they would be included on the donor wall as well. The chart just, um, has another option for if there were, um, the decision point answering that, yes, they had either, um, permits approved within the last few years, or if they were above this amount of contract amount that they would only be allowed on the donor wall. That was what that was trying to portray.
Okay.
They wouldn't have the option to even have a room named or an area named after them.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I totally appreciate the work that went into this. This is highly complicated, and I had to read it a couple times, and, um, and I appreciate that, but I, I, I think that for any company or person to then look at this and say, well, can I, can I donate? And I think it, I agree with, 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 um, Clark and other council members that I think it would hinder, um, a lot of donations. You know, it would, it would hinder the ability of, of people and companies that want to donate to do so in a way that they, they want to, because they would feel these, you know, the burden of these restrictions. I'm wondering, though, whether we would be able to meet that three hundred thousand dollar fundraising goal without having donor name, you know, donor rooms, rooms named after donors. But what, what, what I'm hearing from the council is consensus is that people don't want rooms named after companies. Um, and I do note that, want to note that I was, I was part of that stakeholder group that met, um, the subcommittee, and one comment that was mentioned, um, was that it should, I think it was John David, um, who attended that meeting, she said that the, the, the rooms should be named after people, not companies. So that's another issue about, well, what do you feel, how do you feel about if a person wanted to make a significant donation? Or a, a person wanted to put it in the name of somebody who, of somebody else, or somebody who's, who's passed away, you know, how do you feel about that?
I think this just should follow number two. So, number, bullet point number two, if, it should be at the discretion. So instead of just making a statement now and just saying, this is what it is, no rooms, no names, no nothing, just if somebody comes with a large amount of money, we should have that discussion and talk about it then, and try and figure out, maybe they had an idea that we, Michael said, that we hadn't thought of, and just handle it at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I like that approach, too. Uh, yeah, the, the Friends have put so much time and energy into this. And if, uh, they're going to be the ones that are going to be the face of the fundraising, they, and then they need to feel comfortable to ask. But we also need to give them the flexibility to, to do the job, too. And so, um, I mean, all the things that you, that both of you had said, yeah, I think that resonates really strong with the council as a whole, and definitely with me. And so, I, I, I would, I'd, I'd empower the Friends of the Library to, to, to take that on. And, uh, you know, I also just want to say, you know, Caroline, I wasn't confused with your chart. I actually looked at it, and it, it made perfect sense to me, and I thought it was really brilliant how you took the, the text and you put it into this. That's difficult to do, so, um, to me, that, that, that was good with that part. But I, 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 I agree with where the, the two, uh, board members are coming from, and, and hopefully, that, that's the direction that, that we can give from the council to them.
What's realistic to you, dollar amount?
Well, I, I had given this some thought and thinking that perhaps that question might come along, and, and here's my thinking. Um, and, and, and I would just say, I'm one of those rare people that actually likes fundraising. On a small scale, I'm good at it. I, I find it fascinating. I would say, based, based on the, the small amount of information we have from the other three libraries, that the appropriate amount for us to raise is a hundred thousand dollars. It's a nice round number. It gives us the opportunity to exceed it. And if we exceed it, if we exceed it by, by a good amount, then, then we really, you know, we have a parade and say, woohoo, we did that. If three hundred thousand dollars is the amount, we're not going to make it, and we're going to feel demoralized by that. And we're a group of volunteers, you know, the, the rules of the road for volunteerism is a little different than if it's staff. If it's staff, you can say, yeah, just do it. If it's volunteers, if the, if the, if the task is too onerous, they just won't show up, you know, it's over, you know, they'll, they got other things to do in their life. So I, I had thought, and, and we could look at other libraries and see what other libraries would do. Maybe with more information, we might come up with a number. I think a hundred thousand dollars is what we aim for. And then if we come to that conversation with a family who has a family foundation that wants to give another hundred thousand dollars and have a room named after him, we have, we lucky enough to land something like that, then we, we work with that, and we exceed that, that, that goal. In the case of the examples that you saw here, uh, um, both of them exceeded their goals, I think. Or no, one of them didn't, didn't exceed them, but they got, they got a large donation. So that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
Okay. And I also note that, you know, with the, um, recent fundraising efforts we've had in town, I think we've exceeded those goals with the skate park, we exceeded it. And so, and I remember being part of that stakeholder group as well, and the feedback I got through interactions with the, the Mothers of Brisbane, which was leading that, that, um, fundraising.
I have a suggestion, uh, that we go with the hundred thousand, but we also have a new supervisor, and we also countywide passed, uh, the Measure A Sales Tax Extension. And I don't know if, uh, David Canepa has reached out to you, he has to me, he wants to meet with us.
Yes.
I don't know if anybody's met with him yet, but if, in case you haven't, then one of our unified things ought to be is only up another two hundred or three hundred K for our library out of these new Measure A funds. And staff, what do you think about that? And council, what do you think about that? That we have a unified request?
Yeah.
When we meet with them.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll go with that, Clark.
Terry, you on the board with that?
Oh, of course.
Yeah, okay, so what should the amount be?
Hundred thousand.
For three hundred or four hundred, or?
How much did?
Sorry, how much did they get in new Measure A funds?
It's going to be extended for long.
It was Measure J.
I mean, I think it was a reauthorization, wasn't it? So.
Yeah, for a long period.
Well, it didn't expire. The, the, the old one went to, what, twenty twenty-five, and now it's extended even further.
Yeah.
So it was just extending it out.
Yeah. It'd be a lot of money for a long time.
I mean, you know, really, really, kind of what we're getting, uh, I, I'm, you know, I appreciate what we get, but kind of disappointed, you know, and, and, and Emery, you can certainly, probably do this. I'm kind of disappointed in the amount that we are getting from the county, you know, compared to maybe what some of the other cities have gotten. You know, it's, it's like, you're the donut. You know, I, I mean, the library for the county, we're part of the system, and, you know, and I feel like, you know, us in East Palo Alto are like, still the bookends, you know, and, no pun intended, but, you know, here's your pittance.
Yeah.
Care to comment, Emery?
I, I mean, I can comment, like, so it's not the library board approving?
Yeah, I know that, I, I know.
Supervisor.
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
Uh, good evening. Um, I'm happy to be here. Um, the, the Measure A funds that have gone to library projects, um, it's been, I think the maximum has been five hundred thousand, except for Happy Bay, and that's an unusual agreement that that city has with the county. Because they serve such a large population of unincorporated area, the county is supporting that capital project fifty percent. So they're getting about eleven million. But that was an agreement that was put in place, uh, when the GPA was formed.
How much are we getting?
Well, we're, we're getting two things. We're getting three hundred thousand Measure A dollars, but then they also offered us a low-interest one point seven million dollar loan.
Okay, so we can ask for another two hundred thousand, let's not be shy about it. I'm talking about us.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, shoot high and then negotiate.
No, I, I think, you know, Anne Marie and I have had actually many discussions around this. We just had one couple, uh, a little bit, bit ago. So I have no problem in terms of approaching the county on, on that part. Um, I mean, I think city staff does not want to approach, get involved in fundraising, and doesn't want to approach private parties, but as far as the, uh, the county government, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, we need to wrap this up.
I mean, we'll, we'll do that with the, our new supervisor.
It's always good for the political leadership to take, take the role there, yeah.
So I just wanted to, for us to kind of agree on a unified amount when each of us meets with our new supervisor and, you know, so.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
Got it. And so what we're asking?
I think it should be three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred.
Okay.
I'll raise you to four now.
Air four.
Three hundred thousand, that's what we're short, and, and that's what we can, we can stand behind that reason.
Three hundred?
Okay, and then we'll revise the, the fundraising effort through the Friends to one hundred thousand. Which I think, I was saying, I was starting to say, you know, I, working with the skate park group, I, I felt that, you know, they wanted it to be, the fundraising people wanted it to be a realistic amount. So I appreciate that feedback. So, um, is that enough direction?
Got it.
Okay. All right, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, in light of the time, uh, others in the city managers scintillating report on upcoming activities, uh, is there anything, uh, that we absolutely have to get done on the mayor council matters that we can put off till, uh, February second meeting?
I believe the January twenty-first item, right?
Right, so I've only gotten, um, confirmation from one council member, so that date may not work well, or there may, you know, frankly, not be the interest to do it. So, um, unless I hear from anybody else, I think our idea is, I'm talking with the mayor, is to, is to cancel this date. Um, I know she's interested in making a, a visit on her own, uh, but if there's a desire to set another date and try to do it as a group, we could do that, too. But, um, the, um, response has been underwhelming.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I, I, I've, I've been there. I mean, I think it's a great, uh, place, and, you know, I recommend council members wanting to visit. Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, I mean, definitely, well, the twenty-first I can't make, you know, because I'm out of town. But, um, if the council as a group wanted to go, I, I, I would still attend. If, but if, if there isn't that interest, then I, I'm, I'm okay not.
Is anybody else interested? Don't be shy. If you're not interested, it's okay.
I mean, you know, it's.
I'm not that interested.
Okay.
It's really hard to take a day off, a day off to, to something like that.
Okay. All right, then, um, why don't we go ahead and cancel that? And then, um, I will try to find a time to go up there on my own, and I'll work with staff on coordinating with someone to show me around. Um, and then I think.
Just the mosquito abatement, appointment, um, do you want to set the interviews for, uh, January thirtieth?
Sure, and it, so that'll be at the same day, the same time as?
It's the planning commission.
Okay.
And I know, Cliff, did you want to bring up, uh?
How many applicants are there?
Two.
Okay.
What day is that?
January thirtieth.
Monday, okay.
Yeah, you know, so, um, I was at, uh, the Davis's New Year's Eve party, and Sharon Boggs, who I, I know through the Lions Club and just in town, and, and she, um, her and I were talking, and she, she was interested in joining the planning commission. So I said, well, go to the city's website and, and see if it's, you know, if you can still get an application. And she went to the site, filled it out, and, and, and then she sent it to me. And then I forwarded it to Ingrid, and then I found out that the deadline had passed. So, uh, but she's already done the application, and, uh, you know, to me, even though the, the deadline has passed, I, I would still want to entertain interviewing her for the position and put her in, in with the other, um, applications that have been put forth. So is that okay for the council?
Don't we have a formal application process that we, you know, invited people and then closed the application process? So doesn't that sort of make it a little?
Well, that's why.
Odd?
That's why I asked Cliff to bring it up, because it, we, it did close, I believe, in October.
October tw-.
Yeah, yeah.
It closed on October twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so.
I don't know how other applicants would feel if we ended up choosing, uh, it'd be kind of, kind of.
There's also going to be an opening on Parks and Recreation, now that there's been a.
And I think in the past, when we've had, um, people that we didn't select for, for one committee, we let them know when there was still. we let them know when there was still.
Yeah, and.
An opening in another.
And she might be interested in that one, given that she has a background in physical education.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, no, I just, hey, I, I put it out there.
I'm cool with it.
Set the appetite for the council, then, then she won't interview. But if, I, I, I'm fine with her doing it, so.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. And are we going to discuss the resignation while we're on that topic? Or I guess that'll be in the city manager's.
I'm not fine with January thirtieth.
Um, with that date at all?
Those have already been scheduled, haven't they?
Yeah, I mean, you.
That's what's on the schedule?
That, that's what you guys, um, decided the last meeting.
For?
Planning Commission.
For the planning commission interviews.
Interviews.
Well, it must have had a brain.
And, and weren't we gonna be pretty tight with that already?
Yeah.
And then now we're adding.
Two more.
So it'd be ten total? Right?
Yeah.
I hate this month. All right.
So we're good with the thirtieth? It's gotta be done.
Oh, it's just the beginning.
Okay. So, so it sounds like people are okay with adding the mosquito and vector control interviews?
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, we're gonna have to do it, just do it.
Okay.
All right, but we're not, we're not, uh, moving forward with Sharon as a, to interview for the planning commission.
I, I don't think it's a, it doesn't seem appropriate to me. I mean, I like Sharon and I don't want it to be about that. I just, I mean, we had an official closing date and.
Well, I mean, it, it, it opens the door for, uh, somebody else, well, well, you did it for her, why not me? I, I, I wanna apply to, you know, I mean, it kinda, and, you know, I mean, that, that's, yeah, puts, puts us in a weird position, you know, so.
The only other way to do it would be to open it up again.
Yeah, I'm surprised that the application was still open on the website.
Well, the information was on there, but the, 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 the date was also on there, so.
So are we discussing schedule, overall schedule next time?
I think we have, you know. I mean, I think we've gotten to where we've lost control of the, of the time here.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that we're not just passing it, cause I have things, I, I wanna discuss it more. So I wanna bring it back.
The bailiffs, yeah. So we'll, we'll pass on all of the other items. Um, I do wanna just acknowledge your written communication.
Only one, a mess and I think you're not gonna be here February second?
That's right.
So if you've got concerns about the schedule, maybe you can just let me know and then I can, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I voiced them. So you guys just remember what I said, but I'll send it.
Just send me any.
I, 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 uh, had requested that we go back to our original schedule before the, before this.
Yeah.
I.
So that way.
I think we need to discuss that more before we make that decision, like, cause I, I, I'm happy with the current schedule.
You know, yeah, I mean, if we don't have.
I think it's too aggressive, Austin.
You know, if we don't have other items, regular items to discuss, then we should put it in there. But I mean, yeah, I mean, if we can't, you know, if it's too aggressive, then why don't we just make the change when, when it comes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't we need to schedule consultants?
We, we do. Um, it, it's, the schedule starts to bunch up in, in February or in March. So, um, well, I guess what I'm hearing from you is to, to just go back to the once a month schedule and have one regular council meeting this, a month. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I suggested.
That's what I would suggest, since we're planning to.
Okay.
I still like the idea of having it, having us finish the deliberations by the end of July because, you know, then we typically take, we have a shortened schedule in, in the summer. And I, I think it's, it's good for us to have that completed before we.
We're not taking a summer break.
Don't take a summer, yeah, we can take a summer break.
I think you could still meet that schedule with the caveat that, you know, no one really knows how many meetings you're gonna need on the deliberations. But in terms of the hearings, I think we can still be done by May, maybe June. And, and then, and then you can, you're gonna have to put your, your deliberation schedule together. But I, I think there will be time to finish before August if, if, you know, that's the desire of the council.
That's fine. Okay. So I just wanna acknowledge quickly the written communications, um, that we received between December third and January fifth on non-bailiffs related issues. Uh, we received correspondence from Jay Patel, Nancy Kuhn, Ray Miller, Colleen Mackin, Grace, Tony Varios, Mary Ann McGuire Hickey, Linda Detmer, Colleen Mackin, Karen Cunningham and Jamie Dunn. And next, we'll move on to oral communications number two. There's no one in the audience, so.
Motion to adjourn to the successor agency.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Not think this is gonna be the one.
Meeting adjourned. Now we will move on to the successor agency meeting. Do we need to wait to change the tapes?